Please join me in the pledge. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please, Diane.
Ken Anderson.
Here.
Sue Philek.
Here.
Bill Graberick.
Here.
Chris Mondy is absent. Pat Schuberg.
Here.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
Here. All right. Any public comment, John?
Negative. No public comment.
All right, I have no awards or presentation, so I would like to get a motion to approve the omnibus agenda, which for tonight includes the village board minutes of December 21st. Committee of the whole minutes of December 21st and the Tricelius Drive Professional Service Agreement with EEI.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Graberick, second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Schuberg. Any discussion on the omnibus agenda? Roll call, vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek.
Hi.
Bill Graberick.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Under mayor, the only thing I have tonight is we got a nice note that Diane passed to me from a lady named Pam Noel, who lives on Dodson, called today to thank Public Works for extra work they did related to snow plowing. There were some large snow boulders she had already contacted her personal snow removal vendor to move. Max Miller from Public Works came along, got out of his truck and moved the boulder. Ms. Noel was very grateful for this extra effort and asked that I be sure to pass this along not only to Max, but also to those he reports to. So Phil, if you will, thank Max for his extra efforts. They are much appreciated in building community relations and helping out our residents.
I will do that.
Sir, village attorney from Phoenix, Arizona.
No report.
Give us a weather report or something at least.
Seventies and sunny today. Same for tomorrow, but I'm returning tomorrow, unfortunately.
And how'd you shoot today?
Didn't play golf. Got a shoulder injury.
Oh, no. All right, village clerk, Diane.
No report.
All right, village engineer, Julie.
No report.
John, admin?
The only thing I have is some of you have already been invited into the break room. I'll be adding more people as we go along. Once we get to the executive session, you'll have to hit the breakout room button down at the bottom. Be a little bit patient. There is a little bit of a time delay, but it will let you in, so. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Building and zoning, Tom? Thought I saw Tom.
Bill, report.
All right, Doug, finance?
You have a resolution in your packet, 2021-01, to approve the annual contribution to the health savings account. It's nothing different than we've done in the past several years, but it establishes $1,100 for each full-time employee that is covered under the health plan and the $1,100 would be contributed to their health savings account, HSA account, so.
All right, I want a motion then to approve Resolution 2021-01 for the health savings account. Moved by trustee Schuberg, and was that trustee Wilson I heard as well?
Yep.
I'll give you the second to trustee Wilson. Any discussion on the HSA? Roll call, vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek.
Hi.
Bill Graberick.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Anything else, Doug?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I was a little remiss. Do any of the board members have anything for Doug or any other department heads we've gone through already? Nope. All right, we'll move on to police. Chief?
Hey, tonight we have up a discussion approval for the resolution on the 10 shared principles. We talked about this at the last board meeting, so that resolution is included in the packet.
All right, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-03, the 10 shared principles?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Graberick, second by trustee Philek, I think is who I heard there. Any discussion on the 10 shared principles? I know we hit it at the cow last time, but not everybody was there, so. No discussion. Roll call, vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek.
Hi.
Bill Graberick.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Pat, Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Anything else, chief?
No, nothing else unless the board members have any questions.
All right, moving on to public works then. Phil?
Discussing approved Resolution 2021-02, rebuild Illinois bonds. The village will be receiving three years in which they will receive two payments a year in a to a total of 369,000. What we would like to do with this money is put it towards the Anderson Road Extension. Yeah, talking with both John Evenhoven and EEI staff, we find that this is probably the best place to be putting the money. So anyway, that's what we'd like to do is that's what the resolution is basically for is to put it towards Anderson Road Extension.
All right, do I have a motion then to approve Resolution 2021-02, rebuild Illinois bond?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Schuberg, second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Graberick. Any discussion on the rebuild Illinois bond? Roll call, vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek.
Hi.
Bill Graberick.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Motion carries. Anything else, Phil?
Nothing at this time.
I have something for you. The walking path to Blackberry Creek Elementary, the one we plow every year, did not get plowed and the kids went back to school today.
Yeah, yep.
I've been hearing about it.
Yeah, I got the guys there scheduled to go out there tomorrow.
Okay.
And get it plowed off.
All right.
I think they, I think that's something that actually got overlooked.
And then trustee Anderson would really like the bike paths cleared off, so when he walks in the morning, it's not as challenging. Can we do something about that?
Sure, sure, whatever he wants.
All right, well, it's easy. Just throw Ken's name around and get things done around here.
And that's called snowshoes.
It was, it was quite a walkout there. Hey, it's just more exercise, right? All right, anybody have anything else for Phil? All right, we'll move on to the bills list. Bill?
Mayor, I reviewed the bills list for this, this date and found everything to be in order. Consequently, I moved to approve the said bills list in 115,985.61 cents.
Motion by trustee Graberick. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Schuberg. Any discussion on the bills list?
You know, it's really, you know, the HOA two down in Blackberry Creek, you know, that's, that's the caretaking done down there and Blue Cross Blue Shield and, you know, our IT service, but nothing really unusual.
All right, anybody else have any questions or comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek.
Hi.
Bill Graberick.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. Any other business? I have one thing, but I'll open it up first.
I, yeah, I, I had one question from a local resident in the neighborhood here where people were snow blowing with, you know, a gas-driven snow blower around midnight you know, trying to clear their driveway. I don't know if that would be considered a noise violation or not.
Chief, that's for you.
Generally speaking, no, because as long as the equipment is in good operating condition, it's kind of like a car driving down the street or somebody, if they were cutting their grass, it generally won't be unless it's something out of the ordinary.
Yeah, well, this was around midnight.
Yeah, it probably won't be. The best that they could do, they'd have to call it in when it happens and we can stand at their property line that's closest to wherever the person is snow blowing and take a measurement to see if it exceeds what the normal decimal level would be. But it probably won't, but I won't say absolutely that it wouldn't be.
Yeah, I, that's kind of what I consider. Did have to get the, see what the decimal level is and the whole bit, you know. It was just somebody who was, I guess, having a hard time sleeping or whatever.
I know.
It wasn't me because I'm always up at that time of night.
I, hey, Bill, I did.
Difficult. We've, we get some of the calls even during the day. We get the midnight shift. People will call and complain and tell people, hey, I'm trying to sleep. Don't, don't snow blow it, you know, eight or nine o'clock in the morning. So it does go both ways. So we gotta, you know, watch with that as well, but we'd have to do a decimal reading and then take it from there.
Yeah.
So the advice then is to call 911 and report the noise.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, I was approached this week. I got an email from someone in town who wanted to nominate someone for Citizen of the Year. You know, we don't have a Citizen of the Year program. Wondering if there's any interest from the board in starting such a thing, and if anyone is willing to help me get this going, we can get a little group together and, you know, maybe model it after some of the other towns in the Fox Valley that do it and some of their rules, nomination stuff, that sort of thing, if there's an interest. It's the first time it's ever come up that I can remember, but I thought it was a good idea, so I thought I'd bring it to the board.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do as well. It's a great idea.
Yeah, Graberick here thinks so also.
So are those three volunteers? Is that what I'm hearing here?
I just saw it from my opinion, not my body and mind, you know.
I, I'd be glad to help too.
All right, I'll set something up and if we go over our limit of board members, we'll, we'll have a, a meeting and unlike others, we will publish our notification to the, to the public and have all that nice stuff going on, but we'll see what comes out of that. John, you and I can talk about that tomorrow. Kind of come up a game plan and we'll go from there. Anybody else have any other business?
Do I push the breakout room button now?
No, we got to get a motion to go into session. But I don't have my card in front of me. Hang on one second.
While he's getting that, John, I had, I was pushed into the breakout room and I had to leave to get back to the meeting. So I'll need to ask you to put me back in it.
Okay, you should still be able to do that. You're not there now?
Oh, I see the breakout room button. Yep, I'm okay.
All right, so then I need a motion to go into executive session under 5AILCS 120/2-2C1, which is Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the Public Body, and 21, which is somewhere on my chart, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Schuberg, second?
I'll second. Anderson seconds.
Roll call, vote, please.
Ken Anderson.
Hi.
Sue Philek. Bill Graberick.
Hi.
Pat Schuberg.
Hi.
Matt Wilson.
Hi.
Motion carries. We will go into this executive session on the Zoom and we will be back and it sounds like we might have some announcements, John?
I, the only announcement we will have is the disposition of any of the executive session minutes.
Okay, if the board will click your join breakout room button, I will see you all there momentarily and then we will be back.
Yes.
All right, the only announcement from the executive session is the meeting minutes. It's our last discussion on meeting minutes, executive meeting minutes, they will remain closed. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, Molly's here. Moved by trustee Philek. Is that who that was?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Graberick. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, we are adjourned. I will call the committee to hold the order at 7:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Ken Anderson.
Here.
Sue Philek.
Here.
Bill Graberick.
Here.
Chris Mondy is absent, sorry. Pat Schuberg.
Here.
Matt Wilson.
Here.
Jeff Walter.
Here. John, any public comment for the cow?
Check one more time. Doesn't look that way. No, no public comment.
We've got a few things on for discussion tonight, starting with the police department referendum assistance. Chief, I think we'll turn that over to you.
Okay, thank you. On the call back, we have Mr. Paul Hanley. He is gonna make a little presentation. You had a one-page flyer in your packet. This is in regards to having him assist us with the possible formation of a referendum to assist in funding the proposed new police department in the future. So we want to let him kind of go through the process that he has. I'll let him explain it and then you'll have opportunity to ask him any questions and I'll try to fill in any blanks where I might, but otherwise, Paul, you are on.
Thank you. So you, you, chief, you mentioned that you did distribute the, the handout?
Yes, it was in the board package, so they.
Okay. So if you get a chance on that handout, you'll note that there are there's a four-phase approach that I outlined. Before I jump in, again, my name is Paul Hanley, Managing Director of Beyond Your Base. I spent the last 28 years working with cities, counties, school districts, community colleges and special districts in trying to figure out what taxpayers want and whether it jives with what the public entity is trying to do. In this case, you're thinking about potentially a new police station. And so my, my approach is focused on respecting the taxpayer, involving them in the planning process so that in the end it truly becomes the community's plan versus staff's plan or versus the village board's plan. And again, I've worked on hundreds of pre-referendum engagements, not just in Illinois, but in Michigan, Colorado, Wyoming, and a variety of states. And again, I think it's, I think the focus is on making sure that before you make the decision to place anything on the ballot, that you truly vet it with the entire community. And so the, the handout that I provided to you, the first three phases that I detail can be paid for by the public entity, in this case, the village. The last phase, which is the campaign phase, would have to be paid for by a group of concerned citizens who come together to advocate for the measure, assuming it's put on the ballot eventually. And so that's super important. Although I'm not an attorney, I spend a lot of time making sure that public entities do not use taxpayer dollars to advocate for a measure because it's not permitted. And so tonight I want to just quickly go through those four, or at least the first three phases prior to a campaign, so you have a sense of what, what it is that we would do. So the first phase, I, I term the needs assessment phase and it's really your homework phase. The first thing we do is a voter analysis, which in fact, we've already done a preliminary voter analysis for you. And the reason we do that is that in the future, if we do any kind of public opinion research, we want to identify both likely voters and unlikely voters. So for example, if you were looking at a March 22 election and we did a survey and we got the survey information back, we'd want to know those folks who participated, were they a likely voter and unlikely voter? Because that would obviously come into play when you're thinking about making decision on placing something on the ballot. The next thing we do during the homework phase is to have you come up with what I call your Plan A and your Plan B. Your Plan A is what you truly believe voters would support and your Plan B is dialed back something from that, so much so that it kind of hurts you to have to put it on the ballot. But later on in the process, once we get to public opinion research, having that Plan A is important because if we, if folks say, no, we don't want this, we want to be able to come back with a question of, well, if we dial it back, would you still, would you support it then? The other thing that we do during the homework phase is to assemble supporting information. So we want to make sure, you know, people still read, but they also like things like site plans and they like elevations and they like floor plans. So we're trying to bring the project to life for the taxpayer because they're eventually going to ask, well, what do I get for the, for, for these tax monies? During the, during this first phase, we also would work with you on your core message. So basically, what's the problem? What's the solution? What's the cost and why is it urgent? And then one of the most important things during the homework phase is to come up with a citizen task force. So in a community of your size, that would typically be about 15 to 20 people. We would obviously have to do it virtually if you decided to move forward with this process. And the good news is that we've done that for the last six or so months doing virtual meetings and it's actually been fairly effective. In that group would include business leaders, civic leaders, faith-based leaders, major property taxpayers, education leaders and other, other members of the community who will truly vet the proposal. So it's not a, it's not a, you know, I would call a feel-good committee, right? That's all yes votes. It's folks that are going to truly challenge you on, on the project and make sure that it's something that in the end voters would support. So that's, that's that first phase is, is all those things I just described. The task force would meet multiple times. But after the third meeting of the task force, they would typically provide a recommendation to the police chief as well as your village manager as to what they're, what they recommend that you share and test village-wide. Obviously, the buck stops there with village board in terms of what you would share and test, but they would, they would make that recommendation to you. So that's the first phase. Second phase is now we take all that information and we share it with the community. So it usually takes the form of multiple information pieces. You, you would do informational webinars. You would do earned media. You would update your website. Any way that we could get the message out to your, to your taxpayers, we would do so. I call that priming the pump. And then the third phase is we ask the taxpayer, what do you think? And most importantly, would you pay for it? And that takes the point, you don't, you don't have enough voters to do a scientific phone poll. But you do have enough voters such that you would do a mail survey. And that mail survey would go to every registered voter household and it would include both closed and open-ended questions, including questions like, what if anything don't you like about this proposal? And we'll get all sorts of great information back from that mail survey. And again, it's, it's half information, half question. So part of it is a small fact sheet that we include with the mail survey in the event those who received previous mailers didn't interact with them. But based on our research, we have determined that the most read piece is that mail survey. And so we get the mail surveys back, we look at, we analyze the results, we then share those results with the task force. And then the task force makes a final recommendation again to the police chief and village manager as to go or no go, and if it's a go, what's the composition of that proposal? And it might not be what you originally started with. So you get all this information back from the community and they may say, well, we like the idea, but we want a larger community room or we want to scale this part back or the tax impact's too large. You're going to have to dial this back. And we share that with, and then that is shared with the village board and, and obviously you have the, you have the final decision as to whether it's a go or no go, and if it's a go, is it something different than what you originally thought? So again, first phase, do your homework. Second phase, share the homework with the community. Third phase, ask the community, what do you think? Would you pay for it? And it's not till then that, that you as the village board makes a final decision on if you're going to place something on the ballot. And if you do place something on the ballot, then typically a group of concerned citizens would come together to advocate for the measure and they'd have to raise their own monies to buy yard signs and do a website and all these things that go into a great campaign. As I mentioned, the first three phases can be paid for by the village. The fourth phase, the campaign phase cannot. I charge a fee for those phases, one through three, to assist you with that process. On the fourth phase, I'm happy to assist the group of concerned citizens who come together, but I do not charge. That's all pro bono and I've done that for the last 28 years. With that, I'd be happy to, I promised I'd kind of do this within 10 minutes. I do a three-hour workshop on election strategy. And so I'm happy to open it up for questions.
Board, any questions?
I'm, I'm curious what your average fees for something like this are.
My fee for this project would be $35,000.
What do you find is how, how, how many, you know, I'm curious about the percentage of how many projects you've done and how many projects go through full fruition versus maybe they just go through steps one through three?
Yep, so typically about 90% of them will go all the way through. And the reason it's such a high percentage is that oftentimes the client will dial back the proposal if there is resistance. And sometimes there's so much, there's so much tax resistance that will say, geez, this is, this is just not the right time to put it on the ballot. So that's happened in the past, but it's rare that that happens. It's typical that the client would either go with the original proposal or dial it back somewhat. And as far as I've worked on hundreds of, hundreds of pre-referendum engagements as well as campaigns, we have an 86% track record. In 2020, we worked on eight different projects. Seven were successful. One did not pass. The one that did not pass is we had indicated that we felt that the project was asking for too much and they did not dial it back and that one failed. The other ones totaled about $360 million in capital improvements. And we were pleasantly surprised because obviously we're smack dab in the middle of COVID and we were very concerned about pushback as a result of that and, and throughout result of, you know, local economies really being hit hard. The good news is that, one, they passed and they will meet their needs, but two, when we did the polling, it really wasn't COVID that was kind of top of mind in terms of resistance. It was truly just focused on the tax rather than, rather than COVID and, and all that's tied to that. So that was, that was a good thing, at least those that decided to put something on the ballot this past year.
Have you worked on a police expansion of this type and done? And what has been your experience now that, you know, police right now and some people's eyes have been, you know, looked at differently in the success, you know, trying to do something in this state of condition of where we're at with things right now?
Yeah. So actually, the handout that I presented to you is one, is a case study from a police station that I worked on that was successful that was in Colorado. It was in 2017. Right after that, I also worked on a, a city measure in which we were able to capture additional operating revenues for the police department, not that same one, but for Frederick, Colorado. So we haven't done a police station since 2000, you know, into 2020 moving forward. And so you raise a very good point in terms of perception of police department. How does that shake out, both in terms of age, party affiliation, all these, all these different things that we could actually test in a mail survey. So part of the mail survey, we test arguments for and against and we'll, you know, we'll see how that all shakes out. And I don't know any other way that we could do it. Each community, obviously, each community is unique.
What is the smallest community you've worked with?
Well, I've worked with tiny little rural school districts in Colorado to everything from, you know, major cities. So in terms of Illinois, I've worked with communities like Paylos Heights, Villa Park. Who else? Joliet, West Chicago. Whole, whole host of different communities.
The, the referendum, do you find that it is a property tax measure that you often recommend or is it a referendum to go to a bond?
Well, I work on both. So for example, right now I'm working with Warren High School District on a possible limiting rate increase. So that would be for operating. I work with, I've worked on, you know, plenty of, of bond issues. And so I'd say both, but most, most of the time it's a, it's a bond issue that I'm working on, facility needs. But I have, I have worked on a variety of mill levies tied to operating needs as well.
Question for the chief, do you budgeted this money for this year or next year or what's?
This money would be included in the fiscal twenty-two budget, which would go into effect May first. So obviously our budget would be hopefully approved before that, but you know, Paul has indicated we need to get some things started earlier than when our budget starts. So, you know, we would need to really make sure that we have a firm foundation that I would expect, you know, our budget would be approved if we do include these monies in there. And, you know, go from there. The initial startup part, we do have a little bit of funding available still in the current year's budget with some of the cutbacks we have had with things that haven't happened that we did budget for, but we would be looking at putting this in the fiscal twenty-two budget. You know, kind of trying to keep our project moving along to see where we're at. Another thing that, you know, we're looking at is like soil borings to make sure we don't get any kind of surprises up there, which is something I'm looking at for the next fiscal year, just to make sure we have items in hand. And again, as we discussed with the, a couple of the different companies that have offered some pro bono services to us for this, one being White and Company, who Paul generally is affiliated with in our area. You know, we need to make sure that, you know, those soil borings could indicate whether we need to have any other substantial fill or anything done on the land, which could affect the price, which we would need to know going into the, you know, how much are we going to need to ask for? So it's all fiscal twenty-two budget year money right now for them.
I don't know if there's been discussion. I know we've talked about that location as, by the Blackberry Creek Elementary School. Have we done anything yet to just see what the public's opinion of, of a police station at that location? Or would that be part of this?
I think that's part of this, this plan. I mean, obviously that's a, a very good site for us, not only location in the village, but you know, we've had the space needs analysis done. It meets the needs of the village, not only now, but moving forward with room to expand if the village does become larger than what the initial facility would be built for. It does provide for that. And it's in a good location. It's probably not, you know, really good for a lot of other things at that point being between an elementary school and our water tower and water well.
Well, I, I know, I know that. I know the issue was before people not wanting a liquor store potentially at that location. And, you know, people going real close. Well, you're going to have potentially people that are going to prison or not present to jail or exiting jail out onto, you know, Blackberry Creek Drive. So I'm just thinking out loud what there was issues before with people upset that you potentially could have a liquor store right next to it.
Yeah, I mean, if you look back at the history of the purchase of that land, the opportunity presented itself. So, you know, the board took advantage of, of being able to get that land and tagged it for this. There was nothing that says this has to go there. That's just been the plan we've been working towards. But should there be, you know, negative comments from the community or, you know, if we have to look elsewhere or whatever the case may be, the soil doesn't work out, we'll, we'll have to address it then, which will, you know, obviously significantly increase the cost because we're not going to get, you know.
Right. I get it.
And so, but that I think is a time will tell kind of a thing.
I think, you know, that'd be one of the great things that would come up in this, you know, public comment survey that is part of Paul's project is are we going to get any real negative feedback, like you mentioned, that, you know, would people be opposed to it being over there? Is there going to be a substantial uprising, if you want to use that term, about putting a police station that close to an elementary school?
Yep.
Okay.
So what are next steps then, chief? Waiting till May or do we, do we need a board approval at another meeting to get things started with your current budget or where are we going from here?
Well, this, the funding for this full program would be included in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget. I guess, you know, we have to look and see how the whole thing comes down as far as does the village support that along with anything else and not only our budget, but all the other departments budgets and can we continue doing that? And that'll be, I guess, timeline I'll have to work out with Paul as far as how far can we go with the funding that I know I have existing in my current budget? That's left from other projects that we didn't complete due to COVID situation or whatever. And how far can that take us until the board makes that final decision on our budget? And I know for sure that we have that to move forward. So I, I know, Paul, I know if there's anything else that you could offer at this point in time, but obviously that would be by May, we would know before May and that's that first part of the needs assessment.
Yep. So, yeah, as you mentioned, the, I mean, again, I'm happy to work however you need me to bill to make it work for you. But you're right, the first phase would be completed by May. All those things I talked about, kind of that homework phase. Then we, you know, then we go into summer and everybody's kind of in the la-la land. So that's a bad time to do any kind of aggressive planning. We take a pause and then in the fall of twenty-one, we put that task force together again and say, okay, here's, here's what we talked about last time. Here's what we're thinking. We want to share with, share and test with the community. In the fall of twenty-one, we, we, you know, do the multiple mailers in the mail survey, get that information back to the task force and then get that information back to the village board. At which point then you make the decision is March of twenty-two, the right decision to place a, a police new police station measure on the ballot.
I have a question for you, Mr. Hanley. Does all the mailer, the, the plans, the level plan that we need to show the community, does, is that all included in your fee?
So, so my fee does not include hard costs, so printing and postage. So if you need, you know, if we want to do multiple mailers, fortunately you have, you know, some twenty you have four thousand one hundred and seventy-two voters, so they probably live in, you know, twenty-five hundred households. So it's not a, not a huge amount, but that would be, you know, my fee plus any hard costs and that usually is printing and postage.
Okay. What about the presentation of the plan and the type of view that the community needs to see to understand it and that kind of stuff?
Completely, completely separate. So my, my work is strictly pre-referendum work that does not include design and things like that.
But, but as far as if I'm understanding right, just looking at your, so all, any printing or hard, hard copy things for each phase, one, two, and three is additional costs?
Correct. So we would do, so all the things that are included are all of my teams, all the soft costs. So facilitating all the task force meetings, helping with all the messaging, develop, designing all the mailers that go out. Designing the, the mail survey, doing all the data entry, putting together a presentation of the data entry of, of the final results. So it's all the soft costs tied to rolling it out. And then, as I mentioned, I don't charge, once we go into campaign mode, then my team doesn't leave. Then we are there to do pro bono work, which we have done for almost three decades with, with hundreds of clients. And we just carefully track our time so that we provide an in-kind contribution letter to that campaign committee. So that typically includes, you know, your, a group of concerned citizens would say, hey, we need help in designing a yard sign. We need help with a, you know, the campaign website. We need help with what would the messaging be? We need help. We'd like to do a mailer. Can you help us with that? And the answer to all that is yes, and we don't charge for it. That's our way of, that's our way of giving back to the community.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hanley?
I just had a quick question. And where are you located?
So right now I'm right outside of Boulder, Colorado. I have an office in Chicago and an office in Darien as well.
Okay.
Obviously during COVID, it's been difficult to visit the Darien in Chicago office, but again, as I mentioned, we've done a lot of this virtually and it's been pretty effective.
If you were to travel to the area, would that come under your office costs that you would normally do going to Chicago or would we incur time and travel?
Yeah, you would incur, you would incur travel, not time, but travel.
Anything else, anyone?
Are there other companies that do this as well?
I do have competitors and I'd be happy to share those with the chief if he would like to vet other, other potential companies.
So chief, do we, do we have a ballpark of how much more this would really cost?
I mean, other than having to find out from, you know, Mr. Hanley on how many trips he would believe he would physically be able to or need to make, assuming that we get out of COVID and we're not doing this all virtually. Otherwise, you know, obviously we have a relatively small voter pool, so it's not a huge additional cost for the printing and postage. But I don't have all of those costs rolled in. We, obviously we know his costs and, you know, I'll have those other ones finalized by Friday because my budget submission is due to Doug by Friday for the initial go-around. So.
And I think it's important for us all to include not just postage and mailing, but also the cost of a, of a, a site scale, you know, three D image of what the building could look like, if that's what's, you know, conveyed to communicate to the community. As I understand, I believe that those can be quite costly. So I think, yeah, if we were to just incur postage and mailing, yeah, that's pretty minor, but I'm concerned about some of the other larger costs that perhaps we're not.
Yeah, Paul, if you can provide anything, we don't have a, a drawing of the building because we don't have a architectural layout of a building yet. We have kind of a proposed footprint from the space needs analysis that was done by M W L for us. But we don't have a, a drawing per se.
Sure.
You know, so I don't know if Paul, that's something.
Each architecture firm is unique. You know, so if you were to approach White and Company and say, hey, we would, we really need an elevation. Doesn't have to be super detailed, but at least it has to respect the taxpayer and give them a sense of what this might look like on that particular site. I'm sure they would work with you. You know, to be cost-effective. I just, I couldn't tell you exactly what that cost would be. But if you were looking for a super detailed, you know, three, three D rendering and all these different things, then it gets really pricey. But I think of, I think if you have a roughed-in elevation that's halfway nice and people get a sense of what it, you know, people vote yes for their dreams and no for their fears. So they want to know what, what, what's their, what's this money going to be used for? They, they want to, you know, get a sense of what it looks like. So I think a combination of floor plans, site plan and, you know, halfway decent elevation, I would reach out to them or whoever else you're dealing with and, and get a bid on what that might, you know, what that might cost. I don't have the exact amount though.
I can reach out to the firm that did the space needs. That was McLaren Wilson and Lowry that, that did that and see if they'd be willing to provide us anything if we needed, you know, some sort of a drawing of something that would fit the square feet of space and the general kind of layout that they thought would work well on that piece of property for sightlines and layout and so forth.
Yeah. And I would, I would approach White and Company as well. I mean, I think everybody's really aggressive right now and wanting to get work during COVID. And so I would, I would reach out to multiple parties and ask.
See what I can get and see if any of them are willing to do it pro bono. For something simple that we can put on a drawing.
I think that's going to be necessary to even attempt this. We have to have something to show the taxpayers.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure the task force would, would be asking for that as well, once they were formed and, and I do appreciate that approach that we have a citizen task force and we get our constituents involved. You know, business owners and, and, you know, residents and such. We've had them involved in other planning sessions and strategy sessions and, and we have a fairly good group of folks who like to be involved. So I think getting that task force together will be a very positive thing for this to to get residents behind it. I think the general feel from, you know, people I've talked to is that they understand that we need this. We're getting to the point where, you know, Village Hall was full again and, and the chiefs, you know, spaces don't meet the requirements that are laid out by the state and the feds. So we've got to start moving, you know, forward on something. And I think this approach of bringing the, the taxpayers to the table to say, you know, yay, nay, what do you think? This is really a, a good, good approach. So I appreciate your, your time, Paul. This has been really enlightening. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right. We will move on to the S S E S presentation by E I. Thanks again, Paul. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Stephen out there?
I am here. Steve, the wastewater guy is on board. How's everybody doing?
Good evening, Steve.
Hey, Steve, you should be able to show your presentation if you'd like.
Fantastic.
Come on, John. I just figured out how to turn it the right way on my screen. I was going to show it. Geez.
All right. Has everybody seen the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yep.
All right. Very good. For those who don't know me, Steve Dennison with Engineering Enterprises. Thank you to village president and the board and appreciate the opportunity to, to work on this project for the village. Doing a lot of work on the wastewater side of things for, for a number of years, including at the wastewater plant. As many of you already know, it was a pleasure to work with John Evenhoven, Phil and John Wharton B on this project and bounce some ideas off them and with their knowledge and experiences of the system, it was invaluable during our investigation. So again, this is for the sanitary sewer system evaluation. This is a continuation of a project that's been going on for a couple of years to try to identify sources of unwanted water in the sanitary system. So whenever significant rainfall occurs in particular, you have unwanted water that can make its way into the sanitary system. And the problem with that is it takes up capacity in the system so that it can kind of choke the wastewater, what you actually want in there to be conveyed from flowing properly to the wastewater treatment facility. It can then cause backups in the system and into people's homes, which is obviously the, the biggest issue that people do not like to see and becomes a health and safety issue at that point. And it also, the, the amount of water that, that gets down to the wastewater plant significantly increases during that time. And the implications there is that the process is at the wastewater plant can have a hard time processing that amount of water as far as the biology and the physical nature, the size of the, of the processes down there. And it can also cause backups at the, at the wastewater plant and, and other significant issues there. So you know, that's why there's been a big focal point. There's, it's been known that there has been infiltration and flow issues. And I know that John and Phil have spoken previously about. about this in the past. And so this is, this is kind of the next step that was taken here. So with that lengthy introduction, I will step through the presentation fairly quickly here. So I'll give a little bit more background about I N I. Look at the flow monitoring results, which happened in 2019 with that study. The SSES study was done this year. That's the, going to be the bulk of what we're talking about. The focal point is part of this presentation and then summarize and talk about the next steps moving forward and what can be done. So again, this is a good visual I've always found for infiltration and inflow. So you can see here in the blue, you have infiltration sources. That can be foundation drains around the home, broken laterals going from the main into the home. Any cracks in the main pipe, any root intrusions from trees into the pipe, manholes that are breaking down, those sorts of things that little, little sources of water that can get in that add up over time. And then you have inflow sources in the green, which can be a roof drain connection, uncapped clean out in the, in the lateral. Or the big one, which is a storm sewer cross connection. And those are typically larger volumes of water that are allowed into either sanitary system at that point, if you have inflow. So if you have a large, large rainfall event and immediately after the largest and highest intensity rain, you get, start getting a lot of water into your sanitary system. That's usually from inflow and, and one of those sources there. Otherwise, the infiltration is as the groundwater table builds up over time and that water can then get into the system. So we typically take a phased plan to try to minimize the amount of, of money really that's spent to try to tackle the I N I issue. So you want to try to focus on where you actually have problems instead of taking a shotgun approach and starting to do rehabilitation of your system everywhere. It's good to try to be able to focus in on the areas that are giving you the most problems. So the first step is to do a system-wide characterization, which is already, this has already been done where we break the, your, your sanitary system into different sub-basins and the smaller areas that are easier to investigate. Then we look into, in phase, at the end of phase one, sorry, you get into flow monitoring, which was done in 2019. Those devices are set up and you try to capture some rain events. And you try to identify based on those flow monitor results, where your highest sources of infiltration flow are coming from. So again, that happened in 2019. I'll talk briefly about those results. Before I do that, phase two, after the flow monitoring is what we did this past year with the sanitary sewer evaluation survey, SSES. And that's where you're doing some field work to really dig into those areas that were identified in the flow monitoring to see specifically what structures or what pipes are causing you the most problems. So through that process, you can then identify where, where your, your money is best spent for rehabilitation moving forward. And to come up with that prioritization plan and then you implement it in phase three with the rehabilitation. So that includes a handful of things that are shown here and can be implemented. This is obviously where you're spending the most money because this is actually getting into construction techniques to rehabilitate the items. The other items are more of investigative and analysis to determine where your sources of I N I are. So phase three would be the next step. So the flow monitoring that occurred, it was after talking with village staff, it was identified that the downtown area was the, the highest culprit for, for I N I. That's been known just based on our observations and what happens in a system. So you can see here on this map, hopefully you can see it. Okay. But obviously you have the railroad tracks and Route 47 here. Sub-basins A, B, and D are really around the railroad tracks, Route 47 areas. Your oldest part of town. Naturally, you know, oldest infrastructure there with manholes and piping and the most prone to having defects that have occurred over time that are going to lead to infiltration inflow. At that time, we also identified that we were going to do some flow monitoring in basin C, which was a larger area. Just to comparatively see if there was any I N I, significant I N I coming from that basin. So the results of that flow monitoring study concluded that there was a lot of inflow coming from sub-basin A. And then the highest infiltration there was coming from sub-basins B and D. So again, sub-basin A, a lot of inflow. So whenever you had rainfall events, a lot of water was immediately getting into the sanitary system in basin A. Basins B and D, there was still a decent amount of water getting in directly after rainfall events, but infiltration, it would continue to seep in over a long period of time. And actually sub-basin B, there's a lot of constant infiltration there. So even when it's not raining, you have a lot of groundwater that tends to get into the pipes in that area. So basin C did not have comparatively a significant amount of infiltration inflow. So we recommended at that time to pursue SSES fieldwork in sub-basins A, B, and D and not do basin C at this time. So moving into the SSES, which happened this past year, there's three main branches of fieldwork that were done, manhole inspection, smoke testing and televising. There was advanced communication that was done before the smoke testing occurred, primarily because that's one that residents are usually most concerned about with the smoke potentially getting into their homes. And there's some things. There were mailers that went out to everybody, all the, the, the addresses in the sub-basins where the smoke testing was performed to give them advanced notice of when the work was going to happen and give them instructions, what they could do to make sure that smoke did not get into their homes and to identify that was non-toxic. So we felt like that smoke testing communication plan went very well, did not have any complaints from the residents from that. The manhole inspections, so the smoke testing occurred near the end of July. Then the manhole inspections occurred throughout August and the televising occurred from the end of July through August of, of this past year. And the smoke testing results, basically what they do is they have liquid smoke that they pump into the system and then it comes out in it wherever there's a defect. Typically it will go out the, the vents in, in the homes and that's what it's supposed to do. And that means everything is, is working properly where you start seeing smoke come out of different other areas is when you know you have an issue. So that could be a clean out that is on a lateral in somebody's yard where there's smoke coming out and that's obviously a damaged clean out and water can get in there if it pulls up around that clean out. Manholes can smoke if there's open pick holes or if there's other defects with the frame and grate and cover in particular. And then, you know, there's other areas too. For instance, there was a random smoking area in the grass, which we suspect was due to a damaged pipe, but it was difficult to tell based on, on the location. So we're able to investigate and identify wherever some of those defects had occurred. And so what we did was we, we integrated this into a GIS map where we have all the manholes identified and then all the defects identified. And we can show it on this, this map of the sub-basins. You can see in sub-basin A as where we had a majority of the identified defects. Some of them were broken cleanouts or missing cleanouts, missing lids for the cleanouts. Some others where there was no smoke coming from the roof fence, which could mean either a blockage or a defect in a lateral for that home. So there's a handful of things that that could mean and will be worthy, worthy of further investigation at some point. Basins B and D had a decent amount of similar defects. He had a smoking manhole in each basin B and D. And then there were some missing manholes that were identified on the maps, but we could not locate in the field. And village staff will be, or is going to be following up and trying to figure out what happened to those. The other defect happened and that was the smoke in the grass that you saw on the previous slide up here that will be investigated further, identify exactly what that defect is going to be. The manhole inspections are pretty straightforward. You drop a camera in. It spins around and it takes a 360 degree panoramic shot inside the manhole, high definition. And it provides a very good snapshot for being able to rate how the manhole conditions are. So we use that to, in a coding system to objectively identify what, what defects occurred in the manhole. So these are just a couple of examples, pictures I have here where there was a broken frame that ended up and it was obstructing flow in a manhole in this area. One thing I'll note here is we go through some of these, you'll know that a lot of these are on North First Street. That'll be a kind of a theme I'll get back to a little bit later. Again, you know, North First Street, there's infiltration. I can see staining inside the manhole that happened there. That was probably the most common defect that was noted throughout the manhole inspections. And then you have a damaged structure where you can see some exposed brick here that and, and grout openings that could promote infiltration in those areas as well. And here is a sealant for the manhole joint that was, that was coming in and that could promote leaking as well. Here's a summary map of the defects for the manholes. Basically this gives a rating from low and green to severe and red based on the scale and the, in the coding system that's implemented here. That's a, a common, well-known coding system through, through NASCO. And so you can see that in, actually I'll bring your attention, I guess, to sub-basin B. And this is North First Street here. And you can see all of these manholes are red, meaning severe rating. So with the, with the defects there, and that would go back to the constant infiltration being, being very high in sub-basin B, there's likely some correlation there between the constant infiltration and the condition of the manholes in that sub-basin. Otherwise it's fairly scattered throughout sub-basins A and D with the conditions of the manhole. The next item is the televising. So it's, this is a very common thing to do is put a camera inside the mains and run them up and down the mains to see visually what defects are, are found in there. And here's shot of some of the defects that were found in, in some of the sewers. So you can see roots growing through a joint in the upper left-hand side here, more roots just beneath that. Obviously these are not ideal. They're blocking flow from coming in and allowing a pathway for groundwater to get into the pipes. You have grease buildup in the upper right-hand side here. That was even after jetting the pipe to try to break as much of that loose as possible. Again, that can back up and lead to infiltration. Then you had other things, wherever you have dips in the pipes, you can have cameras that go underwater. That's not ideal. Identifies there's a defect in the piping whenever the pipe, the camera goes underwater. And there was a random things, either soap fence or garbage bag, something that may have been left over from some construction activity or, or something else that ended up down there. So. There's all sorts of stories about what you find in sewers and none of which are really appropriate to say at this point in time. But that's the way things go in this world. So here's a, a map of the defects and some of the recommendations for repairs for, from the televising. You can see, you know, it's very colorful, looks very nice, but you don't want a lot of colors usually in his maps because it identifies defects. The, the light pink is point repairs. Those are usually some more of the more expensive ones to do because typically you'll have to dig up and actually replace sections of pipe in that case. And you'll probably want to time those whenever you are doing some street repairs in that area. Unless the, the defect is so significant that it's considered severe and emergency, but in most cases here, those defects can wait until some, some other type of repairs done to try to minimize the scale of cost there. Otherwise there's some recommendations for additional cleaning and, and lining and some root treatment scattered throughout, throughout the sub-basins. Generally speaking, I'll say that given, you know, the age of, of the system, almost all the piping here is clay pipe. And, you know, which is in antiquated piping, usually use PVC or ductile iron pipe for, for sanitary piping. And, you know, given, given the age of the piping, I was actually surprised. I, I expected it to be in a little worse condition than it was. So. That I guess is a little bit of a silver lining. It doesn't seem like it when you're looking at this, but it would not have surprised me if the results had come back were showing that the piping was in worse condition than it actually was. So I, I say that and then I show you the slide with all the costs on it. So that kind of takes away any of the luster there, but you can see how this is broken out where we have it broken out with manhole rehabilitations and sanitary sewer rehabilitations. And then private defects would be at the homeowner's cost. And then moving from left to right here, you have it broken out into the sub-basins where the work was done. So what this allows is for kind of a phased approach to occur where you can look at areas either in by sub-basin or by the priority level, severe and high are usually the areas that you try to go after first because those are going to be your highest sources of infiltration inflow to the different types of rehabilitation between manhole and sanitary sewer. And you can even break it out further, particularly with the sanitary sewer rehab methods to phase out the repairs over time. So it, it's not typical that you would do the bottom line cost here of almost $750,000 on one shot. You're going to, it's, it's highly recommended to break this up over a period of time and to strategize on the, the rehab methods to, to do sooner rather than later. So we'll continue to work with, with staff in those prioritization schedules, you know, going through budgeting currently. And so this is, this is an ongoing discussion that's going to tie into that. You know, do you go after the manholes first in, in some of these sub-basins? Or do you do a mix of both? Typically you want to try to lump together manhole work or sewer rehab work. There's a scale of magnitude there with the contractors who would be doing that work. So you, you can save a little bit of money if you focus on either manhole or main repair at a particular time. And then there's also other factors that go into it. As I mentioned before, if you have point repairs, for instance, you might want to wait till you have road construction that's scheduled for that area to, to do that work. So there's, there's various things that are going to be taken into account. And obviously budget's going to dictate some of the approach here as well. So. Some moving pieces, but this breaks it out in a way where you can kind of pick and choose what your highest priority items are based on the report where we show the, the most significant infiltration inflow occurring as well. And then come up with a game plan to address it over, over multiple years. So in summary, you know, just wrap this up very quickly with the smoke testing. There's some, some things that the village is going to do related to identifying missing manholes. And to look at a couple of the manholes, sewer main defects that were identified, particularly up here in, in sub-basin B. And then come up with a plan for identifying the private issues and notifying the owner of things like defective laterals, damaged cleanouts. Cause those can really add up particularly in sub-basin A here with those things. And you know, while it's, it's the homeowner's cost technically to take care of that. Those are, a lot of them are fairly small items and that can be done quickly and, and cost effectively. Manhole rehabilitation, again phased approach. We talked about this already. And similarly with the sewer rehabilitation, I went through all this already. So the next steps are to complete the phase three rehab based on the phased approach over multiple fiscal years. And then there's other sub-basins throughout the village, which we consider to be lower priority than basins A, B, and D. But at some point it's recommended to do investigations in those areas is that infrastructure ages over time to try to head off any infiltration inflow that might be occurring in those areas as well. And with that, I will take any questions and John and Phil can tell me what I missed.
I think you did a good job covering most everything. My biggest question I guess will be, I, I know we'll cover this in another meeting too, but I'm looking for in your experience, where's the biggest bang for our buck? I mean, my, my gut feeling is obviously I think we had to go after the manholes first. Or what's your thoughts?
I would agree from the standpoint of sub-basin B had a significant amount of constant infiltration coming in. And I really suspect. And I really suspect those manholes on North First Avenue in particular are a significant contributor to that. I would say that should be near the top of the list. But the other thing is sub basin A and the inflow, uh this, the volume of flow. That comes into that that sanitary system during rainfall events. Tells me that there is, whether it's little things that add up. Um or some of those defects that were noted are significant contributors. I think sub basin A needs to be a focal point as well. Um and that could be some of the 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 main rehabilitation there could be the manholes. And I would also strongly suggest some of those private defects to. That we talk about coming up with a plan and notify those residents and and try to get some of those items rectified as well.
You know, is with basin A, as fast as the water. Comes on and then it goes away right after the rain kind of dissipates. It doesn't. It doesn't go on and on, kinda like maybe B and D does. You boy, it just. I I don't know. I don't think you found anything so far as in your camera work, but if that doesn't scream, generally, it usually screams that it's a storm sewer tied in. Which in some villages, they used to do that quite often. And sometimes it was by mistake and sometimes it was by whatever, but.
Well, in in this case, yeah, you don't have storm sewer in that area.
Exactly, but we do, we do have some old stuff, but it does, you know. You got a couple of clay tiles heading to it. I kinda doubt it also.
Yeah.
But there is, there is some some so-called storm sewer in that area.
More more likely what's occurring in that area is the groundwater table. Is reacts very quickly is my suspicion. And it will, it will jump up very quickly during a heavy rainfall event. Uh to the point where it gets to the elevation of the sanitary sewer and it'll just run right into the sanitary uh sewer system at that point. You know, there were no real significant items identified as far as. Um. You know, defects that would contribute inflow at a high rate. Um like you said, a lot of times when you see that, it's a storm sewer connection. There were no. There was nothing identified where you had, you know, a uh sanitary manhole. In a lower area with an open pick hole or or anything like that, that uh that would seem to lead in that direction. Uh I think it's a uh probably an accumulation of of a lot of little things that are occurring there.
Yeah, it could be like, like, like it's been said to me is that, you know, who knows how many sump lines were actually tied in over there just to keep that area dry. You know, sump lines.
Yeah.
Tied into the sanitary, which, you know, in some of those areas, it would never, I mean, if the sump pumps run quite a bit. The backyards would probably never dry out. And it would be a, you know, you'd have an infestation of, you know.
Yeah.
Bugs in the summer.
With with some pumps, though, you would probably see that over a period of time cuz they typically run out, you know, even after a storm has ended. Um there could be some there, but the only way you identify sump pump connections is actually going people's homes and that's a whole.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's a, that that's not gonna.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess that's kinda what I'm looking at is what's the biggest bang for a buck. And and I think you're right. It looks, uh as it looks on your map, uh First Street is probably the, a big culprit.
Didn't we, I I mean, prior to coming on the board, I know they did a lot of work on First Street. So I take it there was no sub- substructure work. It was just. Put the sidewalks in and resurface it with curb and gutter. Cuz it would make sense that you would have taken care of that whole system when that improvement was done.
First Street down to the subbase and did sidewalks. I don't know if they did any undergrounds, any of the utilities.
One, one thing about that, Ken, is it's a, it's a relatively deep sewer there, so cost may have been a consideration with that. Once you start touching that as far as really. And at that point, you know, some of the manhole rehabilitation techniques and even some of the sewer lining. Techniques that are available to now, that right now may not have been as readily available back then. Um so the technology's certainly advanced and you can do in-place uh rehabilitation's a lot easier now. Um at that point, you know, consideration may have had, you know, been been occurring to replace some of the structures, some of the piping, but that would have added up very quickly.
So has this been bounced against the road surveys to see which areas make sense to hit first? Well, you know, to to do the road and underneath, or are we. Taking this on separately? I think, you know, ideally, we were talking about doing it all at once. For the areas that need it the worst. If we're gonna get in there and tear something up, let's fix the road too. Have we done that exercise yet?
We're working on it. Um, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, are you talking more in basin A, Jeff, or are you just talking?
Well, I mean, basin A is probably some of the worst roads. Um, you know, C's not much better, but. Um, yeah, I I just wanna make sure that, you know, when when we do this, it's all coordinated, like we talked about, that. We we pick the areas, maybe it's not necessarily as severe, but the road isn't in horrible. It's one of our worst roads. Then we we maybe hit a high, but we're fixing the road as well. So I wanna make sure we're timing all that out. And getting, you know, the most bang for the buck.
Right.
Phil, isn't uh we got C map scheduled for later this month or first part of February?
Yep, it's supposed to be sometime this month, but that you you never know, it could get pushed back, but that's, that's gonna help us quite a lot too. Um because that'll at least give us a, you could say a map on how to. On what we should be doing, not only with our roads, but with with the infrastructure underneath them. So this is, this is kind of good planning, I would say, that it's both coming together at the same time. Um, I just gotta feel it, it's gonna work out to our advantage. It'll help us be able to, uh you know. Look down the road and see, see uh how much money we wanna spend each year between the sewer, the water and the, uh let's say, the streets. So it's actually a good timing, I think.
Is the going, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ken.
No, I was just going back to First Street. It seems like the bank for the buck is First Street. Problem is, do we have to rip up First Street to do the work that we have to do there?
I think, I don't think for the um um the manhole uh. To fixing up the manholes depending upon how bad they are, I don't think they have to tear up the whole street or anything like that. Is it possible they may have to do some work on, let's say, Steve, you tell me if I'm wrong, but. If they've got a, maybe, hopefully, they don't have to actually take any of the manholes out and put new ones in. Hopefully, they can reconstruct them in place. That's kinda what you're thinking, isn't it?
That is correct. They can, they can rehabilitate the manholes in place. But we had uh the recommendation for repairs there were a combination of things, but. Um a lot of uh curtain grouting, which is injecting grout behind, kind of on behind the manhole and then lining uh the inside of it. It's, those are. Both very commonly done. And uh with the main, I had to double check again, but I believe that with the main there, it was either root treatment and or lining. Uh but I don't think we had any reconstruction of of the main on on First Street there. So. Um I'll have to double check on the main, but I believe everything should be able to be done in place.
Yeah, and if it is the manhole, sometimes you gotta put a chimney, or they go chimney seal and what have you in there. So you might have a. Six by six patch over the top, you could say, but that's, 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 that's really nothing.
Well, we would recommend waiting um until you do some roadwork uh to do.
Do even that.
Chimney seal in that area, so you're not just ripping it up just to put a chimney seal in.
Right, it all depends if you got any rings left or whatever.
Yep.
If how good a shape they're in, you know.
You know, I'm curious on a project like this, um it's. Uh you know, it's such a good project. We've talked about INI for years. And you know, certainly there's a cost and what uh the water treatment. Waste water treatment plant costs in processing and moving through all that water. Their benefit to the community by having a better storm, stormwater control. I'm curious if there's any kind of cost benefit analysis that we can gauge. At some point, as we do X number of a project. Will it return how much in bottom line benefit of saving, of cost savings? Uh for taxpayers. Well, is there any kind of a cost benefit analysis that you've done?
Not done a specific cost benefit analysis there, but you you hit a lot of that, a a lot of the the significant advantages. From a cost perspective, um you know, the energy spent and uh you know, chemicals and other things, the wastewater plant. That are used to treat, you know, groundwater, you know, instead of the wastewater. Um, you know, there's the, some things you can't put a price tag on necessarily, like if you have backups in your system and it goes into homes. You know, it's more of a health and safety issue. You know, another thing to think about is. It may not apply particularly, you know, right now at this, at this moment. Uh but you know, if you free up capacity in your sanitary system and the pipes. It's, you know, capacity you can use for um any commercial or or other developments that might come in. Um instead of, you know, having capacity that's used up already and have to do significant. Uh sanitary system upgrades, um it it can help out from that perspective too. So while. I don't have a specific cost benefit um a- a- analysis I can provide to you, those. Those are some of the, some of the items that you would consider if we were to go down that path.
Yeah, Ken, you make a good point there. I think that's something that we need to get out. Is, you know, how much, how much do we spend? You know, how much do we think we're gonna reduce cyanide? How much does it cost us per gallon or per hundred gallons or whatever? And. And you know, I mean, I don't know that it's gonna be a a money maker, so to speak. But I think, you know, for sure, it's a, it's something we want people to know that there there's, there is cost benefit behind this.
Sure, and I'm not, I'm not thinking it's gonna be, you know, spend a dollar, gain a dollar and and less expenses. I'm not certainly. Expecting that, but if we're um somehow going to be increasing um. Project cost or capital improvement cost. You know, it'd be nice to be able to continue to share with our community and our stakeholders. What benefit they're gaining for that. So, you know, it it's, it certainly environmentally, it's, it's a good thing to do, but. I'd hate for somebody to look at and say, well, you know, I don't have any water backup, so I don't need to do this. Why are you spending my money doing that? You know, it's. You know, just some sort of a, you know, what, what is this gaining us?
It, one of the most significant things that that I should have mentioned before is how it relates to your wastewater plant capacity. So if you're, you increase infiltration inflow, which will happen over time, it doesn't get better on its own, right? It's only gonna get worse. Uh then you're going to eventually get to the capacity of your, of your wastewater plant or get to the critical review stage. And the IPA is gonna require you to expand uh your wastewater plant. That's gonna be the biggest cost impact. Uh you're talking millions of dollars at that point.
Yeah.
We have to expand the plant.
Yeah, good point, very good point.
Yes, Steve, let's um. I don't wanna focus just on I and I with this plan. Um. I mean, all sanitary sewer. And a plan like this helps us stay ahead um of repairs. I mean, looking at. Some of the pictures you shared, um I mean, we could have some severe critical failures and. Um we either do it on a plan or we come back and we're doing it on an emergency basis and it's costing us. Way more than what it would be to just start hitting it now. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out there, not to just focus on the the I and I, you know, there's a lot of other benefits.
That's a very good point as well, Matt. And and the other kind of correlating thing is the longer you wait, the more expensive repairs are gonna get. Um not just from it's from a failure perspective, which is an excellent point. But you know, the costs naturally through inflation are gonna increase as you move out as well. Um, so yeah, yeah, it's a very good point.
Yeah, and would, would, I don't, um, I don't think it's anything out. Would, would you be able to share some? Before and after photos of rehabilitated manholes and um like some sewer main lines that have been. Uh lined like before and after.
Absolutely.
He, what you're referring to, um when you talk about being able to repair these structures in place. And, you know, not dig up roadways and backyards and parkways and stuff like that.
Yeah, if I was better prepared, I would have something up on my computer right now. I could share, but I'll send something out um i- over the next week to everybody here.
Excellent.
Steve, is there, is there a possibility, I see the picture of the fat hanging in the. Tile. Do we have a user above that that we know about that potentially we can talk about keeping the fat out of the uh pipes? Or do we need to put them on some uh high cholesterol medication?
Uh, that's, that's a very good question, Ken. I'll have to go back and look at that exact location again. Uh to see if there's anybody around there, knowing the area we're in, right? Could be a restaurant, um certainly. Uh we're in the downtown area, so I'll go back and take a look at that exact point and see who is uh who is upstream of that. Uh that might be contributing there, cuz you're right, you know, that's another thing you you learn when you're doing these investigations is. You can kinda go back and see if there's some people dumping some things that maybe shouldn't be getting into the sanitary system or. You know, there's some, you know, obviously, you don't want fats, oils and grease of high concentrations getting in there. It creates all kinds of. Maintenance problems for your system and uh there should be uh triple basins and grease traps and things like that uh to prevent that at restaurants. So. Um, yep, those are things that we can, we can go back and help identify too.
You don't happen to have the before picture of that uh grease that got busted through, do you?
Not, no, because they would have jetted, they jetted before they televised, so they would have broken it up uh before the camera got in there.
Just curious.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? Questions, comments?
Uh basin A, you know, I'm, I'm over on Pier Street with basin A. And a lot of, it's a lot of older homes, you know, mine's about a hundred years old. And it's the old river limestone leaks like hell basement, uh you know, just blocks. Since, since we got rid of the asphalt in front of the main entrance. I don't get any infiltration into the basement through the wall anymore. It's, it's, so I I think what Leroy, for instance, mentioned, you know. Put a berm across the back of uh the lots on uh the north side of Reader. And uh diverted over to uh the beginning of Welch up there. Uh, you know, but Leroy still floods and so as he floods. That just overflows and keeps running down towards the tracks across. All the land to the south of Leroy's uh and that vacant lot he's got. So I, again, it's a a simple thing, Ken. Is there any thought of further birmingham along? The uh northern lot lines on the north Reader lots.
The, we, I mean, there is a a build back behind there uh in that farm field uh along, you know, behind. The north side of those houses that would be on Reader.
Uh, yeah.
You, the, the water does flow obviously to the west when you get those super heavy rains. I think that's when it actually fills up enough, because I shot that elevations and there is like, oh, I don't know. Might be anywhere six, eight inches of uh, you know. How do I put it? Of of a swale from the bottom of the swale to the top and then it heads over to uh Leroy's. Um, yeah, I mean, could we define it more? I would have to talk to the uh to the farmer. And see if he'd be okay with bringing that down a little farther, either birmingham it just a little bit there. Or uh excavating just a little bit more of a swale. That would take a little bit more of it. Um, but it should have made a pretty good size difference to the people to the east of Leroy by putting that swale or by putting that berm there.
Yeah, cuz cuz I've actually had white caps in the stream between my house and. The house to the west. That's, that's kind of a runway for it, literally. Yeah.
Has it, does it, has it seemed to help at all?
What?
Has it seemed to help you at all or not really? Cuz you're too far to the west. Has that bird helped you at all or is it, are you just too far to the west?
Say because uh. Number one, I, with with the asphalt out. From, you know, the front of the house, the entrance there, uh, nothing is coming in the basement. It it used to just wash over the asphalt. It, it used to just wash over the asphalt against the wall and. And that would kind of dribble through the corners there and that actually ran into the, to the sewer line. Uh, you know, but it was kind of a trickly thing. I don't know how some of the other homes are in that area, but they're all kind of the same age. So, not quite sure if they have leaky basement walls and uh. And those are usually the high storm events that really create that problem. You know, the sudden heavy rains.
Phil, are you advocating for keeping Pierce as a gravel road? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, 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 it's just, no, actually, just in front of the, because my daughter wants. Horus favors in that gravel area, but uh, not gonna happen until spring or so. But anyway, the asphalt that we had to tear up, we had to tear it up anyway to repair the buffalo box. Right, and uh, you know, it's, it's, it's changed. The infiltration I have within my basement, which is, you know, something from. You know, some medieval musty castle, you know. Anyway, that's just a thought. I, I, I just thought, you know, berming a little further on the north line there. To just direct that a little further west would take a lot of the issues on Reader and Pierce. And even down a little bit to Shannon.
I can, I can look into it.
You know, a- and it would be a cheap approach, maybe if you could do it or if the farmer was willing to do it. Again. You know, that's fine, but yeah, the old parts of town, which is basin A and basin D. Uh, those, those are, you know, the original development, so. They're gonna be a little weary and worn out.
All right, any other questions or comments on this uh, great information we just got? All right, thanks Stephen, it was uh, very informative, uh.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
We just need money now.
Yeah.
All right, Doug, I believe you're up next with the budget revisions.
All right, and John, if you can.
Go ahead, Doug, it's all you.
Well, I'm looking for the right uh. There, can you see that now?
Yes, sir.
All right, so w- we're currently in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. Which goes through the end of April.
We're looking at your folder here, Doug, not necessarily the actual numbers.
Uh, you don't see my spreadsheet?
No, we see your uh.
Your file folders.
Well, that's not what I wanted. Let me stop that and try it again. Well, I'm looking. Uh, there it is. Now, do you see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're currently in fiscal year twenty-one, which ends at the end of April. Um, but we need to make some changes in the current year's budget. And I've been talking with the department heads and you'll see here. This, this column right here, column G, is what is being proposed as the revised budget. This column over here is the original budget. Here's where we were at the end of November. Uh, what's highlighted in yellow are the items that are proposed to be changed. Uh, if it's not highlighted in yellow, it means there's been no change in that line. Uh, I, I'm not gonna go over every line here, a- and our process is to review this tonight. And then bring it up at the next meeting in ordinance form. Because if, if you revise your current year's budget, it has to be done by ordinance. So the next time you see this, it'll be in ordinance form, not in spreadsheet mode as we're looking at it here tonight. So I, I'm going to touch on a few of these lines, set some of the bigger, some of the bigger changes. The department heads are all here, so they'll be able to add uh, anything to it that I. Uh, that, that they want to, to enhance what their changes are. But as we go over it, jot your questions down or, or ask your questions. And then study it and then two, two weeks we'll go through it again. And, and I'm, I'm sure you'll have some questions between now and then. So the first. Item I'd like to highlight, this is in the general fund. This is the revenue side of the general fund. A- and we're going to look at that cell right there. That's a state grant. W- we were very fortunate to have been awarded. A grant through the Kane County Corona Relief Fund of three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Obviously, we had not budgeted to receive that. And so this revenue account is being increased by that amount, by the amount of that grant. A- and so that's, that's the change for that line. The next item I wanna highlight is the one. Directly beneath that, and that's other grants. So we have removed a hundred. And some thousand dollars from that line. We had budgeted to receive the, the CMAP or RTA grant. Uh, we've since learned that we won't receive that. It will be paid directly to the contractor. For, for the work that they do, so it, it will not be a revenue to us. But neither will it be an expense to us either. So you'll see a little bit later down the road here. Where we've removed that same amount from the expense line of the budget. Um. Those are the revenues. Uh, I'm, I didn't denote any other revenue line to highlight. If it's highlighted, it's gonna be changed, but those were the only ones I wanted to comment about. You'll see down here. Uh, the revenues have changed to three million five hundred and two thousand. Where before they were three million two hundred and forty thousand, uh, remembering that three hundred and fifty-two. Three hundred and fifty-two thousand of that is the grant that we've received for corner relief coronavirus relief funds. So that's, that's the revenue side of the general fund. Uh, any, any questions there? Like I said, well, we'll look at this again in two weeks, so. As you go home and study this, if you have questions, please, please email me and. Let me know of any questions you have and the department heads and I will uh. Try to respond to your questions.
Doug, can I ask a quick question? The, uh, just a reminder that the line item on row forty-three miscellaneous income is the reimbursement. From our partners for Liberty Park. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Any other questions on the revenue side? All right, let's move on to uh, the administration department. Uh, the items I wanna point out is this line right here. And that's other professional service. So that's on the expense side where we have removed. The RTA grant, where we've removed it up above as a revenue, but we're removing it here. As an expense, because again, it's not like that's not going to be done. It's that the. The grant money will be paid directly to the contractor, so it, it will not be a revenue for us. And neither will it be an expense for us. All right, that's on the admin side. The other item I wanna point out. This has already been approved. That item right there is two million dollar. Transferred and it's already been transferred and it's already been approved by resolution a few weeks ago. Uh, a two million dollar transfer from the general operating fund to the. General capital fund, so that's, that's been approved. We just want to add that. Update the, that budget expense line in our budget. So that's admin, ten dash ten is admin. Moving on then to police, ten dash twenty. Is police. Uh, we've got, we've got a savings there. In full-time salaries, uh, so full-time salaries. Are going down, part-time salaries are going up. And those, those are the items I wanted to highlight there in the police department. We could be here three hours if you wanna go over each line that's highlighted, but. My suggestion is, as we go over a fund, if there's a particular highlighted line that you. Want to know more about, please, please ask, or you, you'll have a couple of weeks to uh. To become more familiar with the changes that are being proposed and certainly we want you to. Ask any questions that you may have. All right, moving on. Ten dash thirty is building and zoning. There's no yellow there, no changes in building and zoning. Streets is ten dash forty-one. Uh, we've got some, some. Small salary and benefit changes here. Uh, when, when salaries. Change, the, the benefits that are associated with those salaries also change incrementally. Uh, and there's a small change in janitorial. Here's a, another fairly small change. On the insurance side, so that streets, ten dash forty-one is streets. Any questions about streets? So you'll see that the expenditures, total expenditures for the general fund have. Are going to be, proposed to be five million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Compared to three point eight million dollars in the original budget. Keep in mind though, two. We've got a two million dollar transfer in there that looks like, it, it looks in here. It looks like an expense. It's not really an expense, but it's a transfer from the operating fund to the capital fund. So that's the general fund. We're, we'll move on now to the next fund unless there are any questions about the general fund. All right, let's move on. Fund fifteen is the general capital fund. Uh, the big change here on the revenue side, here's the other side of that two million dollar transfer. We showed it. As an expense and the general fund, well, here it shows. It will show as a revenue in the general capital fund, so that's, that's the biggest item. On the revenue side. Uh, we're proposing sixty-five thousand dollars for new furnaces. At uh, at the village hall building and then. Vehicles fifteen dash twenty-eight oh four is vehicles on the police side. You'll notice this, this, this is a twenty thousand dollar savings here, so uh. So this is a change to the good. That's very good. Uh, on the other hand, if you'll look at this change right here. That's also for vehicles and that's in the street department, so that's, that's an increase of. Twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is one-third, one-third of a cost of a new vehicle. For the public works department and uh, Phil, do you wanna s- take just a minute to explain that vehicle purchase?
Yeah, what we're doing is we're breaking up that service truck into three um. Into the sewer water and the uh, street capital fund. So that's what we're doing with that.
So, so a third of it is here, a third of it will be in water and a third of it will be in sewer, so it's, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars. Times three is, is the cost of the vehicle. All right, that's the capital fund, fund fifteen. Any other questions on fund fifteen? Let's move on. Fund thirty is the water and sewer operating fund. Um, not too many changes on the revenue side. We're gonna get a little more interest. Than uh, than what we had budgeted, so that's a good thing. Uh, and here again is a two million dollar transfer. We made a two million dollar transfer in the general fund. We also approved a few weeks ago, a two million dollar transfer. In the water and, from water and sewer operating into water and sewer capital. So this, this is the two million dollars coming out of water and sewer operating and that's. That, that was already approved. We just need to show it in our budget. This is water here, so we've got some salary and some incremental salary and benefit changes. On the water side. Uh, the, the one item I wanna highlight to you is. If you can see where I mapped there, it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is the new budget amount for equipment lease. And that's an increased cost of WRT and Phil's gonna explain. To us what that involves.
What, well, we had as well, three um, with the early change out, we had the same thing happen a couple of years ago. Um, it lasted exactly almost two years. I had put it in the SIP for uh, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. But it didn't last even uh, it, it lasted right at two years. I was thinking it would last at least two and a half. Um, so that sense of, since you have an early change out, that's what we're hit with at uh, well, three. And that's because of the uh, media, uh, the barium is really taking up the space on the media uh, instead of radon, so. Or the radium, uh, so that's unfortunately, that's kind of our pink elephant as well, number three. It's. It's been kind of that way ever since uh, we, I think since you put that WRT in. It doesn't last very long.
So, so explain what WRT is, Phil?
It's the water reme- uh, remediation uh, for each of the wells, so each well's got a system in there that takes out the radium and barium.
There you go.
It's really set up to take out the radium, but the barium likes it so much that it takes up too much of the space, so. That's why it, it fails awfully early and for some, whatever reason, that particular well, uh, and maybe in that. Part of the aquifer, who knows what, but that part, it, it burns up that uh, media quicker than it does that well four or five.
Okay, thanks, Phil. That, that's water, then on the sewer side, we've got uh. A s- a small change on the salary side and the associated benefits. Also changed, so, so those are incremental changes there. Uh. One item I wanted to point out is solid waste disposal or solid waste disposal. One item I wanted to point out is solid waste disposal, our solid waste disposal cost. That we need to double that in the current year's budget. Uh, Phil, do you want to speak to that briefly?
Yeah, um, what I didn't anticipate is they had stockpiled um. Some of the waste uh basically from the year before. And what I didn't catch is that they had it stockpiled. And so I was going off of, you know, previous years, how much we were hauling out of there, well, it turns out that. Uh, they had stockpiled some extra. And uh. It never got hauled out in the year before, so it was, it was more of an error of uh. It was an error on my side, I just didn't realize they had it that much stockpile.
Well, do you expect to have more waste in the coming years, more of the solids coming out of the system? Uh, just because of the digesters?
I'm, I, you know what, I'm hoping, honestly, I'm hoping so, um. That would be, I think that's kind of a good thing if we can get that more of that waste out. Overall, so. I don't think it's going to change a lot, but I think it, you know, it might change a little bit. As it gets, becomes a little more efficient. And especially now that we're, you know, we got to face it, we're, we're adding houses on, so it does make a difference.
Okay, so that's the sewer side of the water and sewer operating fund and you'll. Down here, we're showing revenues at two million eighty three thousand. Compared to two million seventy nine thousand in the original budget. Uh, the, the big change is on the expense side. Uh, but, but remember. Two million dollars of that is, was the transfer. From the operating fund into. The capital fund for water and sewer. So that's, that's water and sewer operating, any questions there? All right, let's move on. This fund thirty five is water and sewer capital fund. So here's, here's the other side of that transfer, so it showed as an expense in the operating fund. And here we show it as a revenue. And the water sewer capital funds, so and, and. As we mentioned before, that, that's already been approved by resolution a few weeks ago. Uh. Going down here, we touched on this earlier, here's. Another piece of that twenty eight thousand dollars for vehicles. That's, that's a third of the cost for the new uh. Vehicle for public works and then down here in the sewer part of capital. Is the other third of it, so it's was twenty eight thousand and. Streets. Twenty eight thousand dollars in water. And twenty eight thousand dollars in sewer to, for that. Utility truck. All right, those are the changes for water and sewer capital. Uh, this shows the changes on the revenue side, two million nine. As opposed to nine oh nine, a million one. On the expenditure side compared to a million fifty three thousand here, so. Those are the changes for water sewer capital, any questions there? We'll move on. Fund forty is the motor fuel tax fund. Uh. We didn't know what the rebuild Illinois revenue was going to be and we did not include it. And the motor fuel tax budget, so we've received a hundred and. Excuse me, a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars, so we're showing that, we will show that. As a budgeted revenue in the motor fuel tax fund, a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Uh, and change. Of rebuild Illinois revenue and, and Phil touched on that a little earlier in the meeting. So that's motor fuel tax fund. Let's go down now to fund forty six, which is S S A number six. Our property tax. Is not going to be quite as much as what we budgeted for, the. The explanation of that, I guess, the best way to say that is. Our other S S A funds are not growing at the rate that S S A six is. So at the time we did our budget, we didn't know what the. Growth rate was going to be in S S A six, which means we didn't know what the E A V was going. To, to be, which means we didn't know for sure. How much tax revenue we were going to get, while we budgeted. A little more. Than what we actually got, so uh. As long as we're changing the budget. For other reasons, we felt it prudent to change the revenue side of fund forty six. S S A six to reflect what the actual is going to be. In fact, we've already received that. All right, that's S S A six, fund forty six. Uh, let's move on to fund fifty six recreation fund, we. This, this is uh. We, we need to have a discussion here on this. Uh, the beginning cash balance in fund fifty six. In May, on May first was a two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We had that much money, that much cash on hand. Um, there's changes on the revenue side. Uh, the home rule tax is not going to be quite as much as what we thought it was going to be. Uh, the gaming income is down. Primarily because gaming was shut down for several months uh during the, the pandemic. The two hundred thousand dollar state grant that we budgeted to receive as a revenue. Probably are not going to receive that this year, is probably going to be. Next year when we receive that, so. Uh, so we're reflecting that anticipated change in. On the revenue side. Interest, little bitty change there, so our total revenues are going to be. In the neighborhood of three hundred and eight thousand dollars, where before we thought they were going to be five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So that gives us total funds available of five hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, that's this beginning balance. Plus this revenue gives us total funds available. So we've got five hundred and twenty two thousand dollars in funds available. And we're proposing to spend seven hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. That's um. That, that's a big difference, and so when you. Consider the funds available and what we're proposing to spend there. We will end the year two hundred and nine thousand dollars, almost two hundred and ten thousand dollars. In the hole, and, and it's not like. A- and that's taking the reserve to zero. A- a- and in fact, we can't. We, we can't do that, uh, we, we just can't do that because. It, I, I guess maybe we could. Allocate some money for a printing press and maybe print our own. Hundred dollar bills, but I'm, I'm not sure that's the proper way to do it either, so, so we've got, we've got an issue here in the. In the uh. Fund fifty six recreation fund, so we've got a. We've got to. Do something there, it, it, it's not workable the way it is. Uh, and. I don't know that we have any other revenue source for this fund, so it, it gets back to. Uh, reducing expenses. In this fund.
But Doug, are you gonna, can we get the? The, the list of all the, the expenses that are related to that? Mine item? So we can see what we have to cut, I see six hundred other improvements, what's the other improvements, you know?
Let me uh.
I mean, you can get it to us because that, that's what we have to make decision on.
Right.
Haven't gotten from the state yet, right?
Well, here, the, the park was budgeted for eight hundred thousand dollars, we had the uh four hundred thousand dollar grant. And then the remainder was going to be split between us and Blackberry Township. And so the way that the state does their. Grant funding is they gave us two hundred thousand dollars upfront, so. The six hundred and the two hundred equals the eight hundred. And uh. Blackberry Township has been paying us, Shodine has been uh a bit behind. In paying their bills, I think that they're probably in the neighborhood of about forty five to sixty days behind in paying their bills. Uh, so there is other revenue coming in. So, yeah, it looks bleak by these numbers, but we've got other revenues that are still coming into this account. Um, when we started going forward with this, uh, with this project. We knew that it was going to be over the eight hundred thousand dollars and we have done everything possible. To cut costs or cut corners, not corners, but to cut out. Extras, if you will, uh, we found ways to do value engineering. And um, I think that it's going to come in under where we initially thought it was going to come in. And I don't mean under the eight hundred thousand, but I mean under. What uh, when we finally get the final construction bids. It's, yeah, I mean, we can, you know, the expenses, everything that's been paid and all the revenues that we've received as well.
If, if there are other revenues that we're expecting to get that we're not. That we're not showing up here. Uh, we need to show those up there, so do, do you know what those are?
They're coming in from Blackberry Township and from Shodine.
And that would be other financing sources.
If that's where you've been putting it, yes.
Yeah, so, so we've budgeted to receive two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. We've received at, as of the end of November, seventy nine thousand, so we left, we left that the same. But, but if you think we'll receive more than that. Give me that number that you. That we plan to receive and, and I'll. Reflect it in that revenue line right there.
Well, I expect to get the full amount from Shodine, they're a hundred and thirty three and some change. Plus whatever the uh half of the cost when we go over eight hundred from Shodine as well.
Okay, so you, you and I need to talk maybe then to. Before the next meeting to.
It would be helpful.
All right, sounds good.
Doug, can you, I, I think we have a wrong um. Label on row five twenty four. It says Department Forty One Street.
Well, it does.
Should it not say Department Fifty Six Recreation?
Well, we don't have a recreation department. Uh, the, the reason we show that is on, on the expense side. The, the middle two. Numbers. Represent a department, so. Ten is admin, twenty is police. Thirty is billing and zoning, forty one is streets and. When we did fund fifty six. Most of the. Expense type things that were coming out of there, now that wasn't just for this year, that's been in previous years. Were street type things. Uh, maintenance supplies and improvements and those kinds of things, so that's why we used. Forty one as the department number in those two digits there, those two middle digits.
I, I understand, above it, right above where you are. Should it say Department Fifty Six?
Yeah.
We, we don't have Department Fifty Six.
Yeah, the expenses come out of Department Forty One, they, we don't have a.
Okay.
Billing Department Fifty Six, we only have a revenue Department Fifty Six.
But parks is just part of the streets. You know, part of public works and unfortunately I've been unsuccessful in handing this off to Phil.
We know Phil doesn't like trees.
We know he doesn't like trees, he doesn't like playgrounds, he doesn't like mulch.
And he doesn't want baskets.
All kids need to do is work.
That's right. So I've, I've kind of kept parks, but that's, that's the origin of fifty six forty one is that it was originally part of. Parks was part of streets.
Okay.
Yeah, someday we'll have our own parks staff. Someday.
So, so John and I, be- before, two weeks from now, John and I'll get together and we'll. Figure out wh- what needs to happen here in fund fifty six. All right, fund sixty three is commuter parking. Uh, we started the year off with. Two hundred and one thousand dollars in the bank in this fund. Uh, we've got some significant, significant changes here. Uh, on the revenue side. Our parking fees for the daily, the daily fee. We budgeted sixty one thousand dollars. We're only going to get about five thousand dollars. This is COVID, COVID related. Changes. For parking permits, we budgeted twenty two thousand dollars. We're only going to get about twelve hundred and fifty dollars, so our revenues are going to be down. In the, in the metro fund. From ninety thousand dollars. In our original budget. Down to. Probably about eighty seven hundred and fifty dollars is going to be our actuals. By the end of this fiscal year, so we're, we're. We're hurting. A lot in this fund on the revenue side. Unfortunately. Just because our revenues are way down. Our expenses are not going to be down proportionately. Uh, so the changes on the expense side. Is social security contribution, we're running a little high on that, so we, we need to bump that up. A- and. Building service, we're. At the end of November, we were already at seventy two percent of budget, so we need to bump that up. Maintenance for street lights were. Over budget. On that line item, so we need to bump that up. And so the total expenditures. Need to go from a hundred and forty three thousand to a hundred and forty five thousand. So you couple that expenditure. With. This beginning balance up here. And this. Estimated revenue here. So we're going to end the year with only sixty four thousand dollars left in that fund. Uh, so we started the year with two hundred and one thousand. And we're going to end the year with sixty four thousand. Big, big, big reduction in that fund. Uh, so it's, it's not like it's going to be underwater at the end of this year. But it will be underwater at the end of next year if. If something doesn't happen now, our revenues next year. Uh, the, the hope is that the economy improves. And commuters start commuting again and our revenues go up in that fund. Uh, but, but those are unknowns right now, so this is just a cautionary note that. We're, we're uh cutting it really close in the metro fund here.
Isn't, isn't this some of the reason we got COVID money is to cover these kind of situations or no?
No, our COVID money we received to cover. Police salaries. The salaries of first responders, that was. What the COVID money covers. So that's. I, I just feel like I need to point that out to you that uh we're going to have to make some tough decisions. If not this year. Then definitely next year in the metro fund. If not this year, then definitely next year in the Metro Fund.
What, I I've just got a quick question. What I I obviously I've never been around it, never experienced, maybe no one here has either. What will happen if we don't have money to maintain Metro? I mean, is Pardon me?
That's a good question. We're gonna have to look at cutting back on services. And you know, that's part of the reason why we cut off the west part of that lot. And we're just gonna have to figure out a way to reduce personnel costs and repair costs.
Yeah, I mean, I know we had figured in some patching this year so far as having uh in the streets program. I was just, since they were there, I was gonna have them do it, but I I decided against it. Yeah, only just so we can save that money. We'll just have to fill in the holes with our patch just to get by. I don't know what else to do.
I mean, we just gotta, we gotta look at the daily traffic and and narrow down the amount of spaces we have available and keep that in good repair until we start seeing more traffic and more evidence. If it's only twenty cars a day, then maybe we go down to one lane. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, it I counted. I mean, of course, it was a Sunday, but there there was sixteen there yesterday. I just happened to notice.
Yeah, I check it when I go by pretty much every day, and it's it's not running more than twenty, twenty-five cars, if that.
It's twenty-five, but the high side.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly.
You know, so twenty-five cars gets you, if my math's right, about thirty-seven fifty a day.
Not enough to keep up the lot.
Nope.
No, you got, you know, you got the mowing and you got obviously snow plowing and yeah, it gets um it's gonna get kind of crazy, especially if this is the trend. If the trend is the work from home and I I mean, not that I know anything, but it sure looks to me like that's gonna be the trend for, you know, many of us. Um, I know it is for my wife. Um, you know, I just, I don't know if it ever, I just don't know how much of it will be coming back or or whether Metro would shut down you know, Elburn and Lafox and go back to Geneva. I you know, it's 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 all speculation, but it's
That's gonna play a big role in it is what Metro decides to do, because their operating budget is hurting as bad as ours is when it comes to that stuff, so.
Oh, yeah, but they have huge losses.
Yep.
So why don't we have that conversation with them? Because we're working on our budget, right? So don't we want to say Metro, we can't afford to keep the operating at this location? And then close it down, and then you say, hey, move to Lafox. And if Lafox can't handle it, they'll move to Geneva.
I've talked with our Metro rep, and uh he's in full support of uh shutting down that that west lot, uh, reducing our costs for for snow plowing and anything else that we can do. I mean, he understands the position that we're in because they don't have the riders. And uh, you know, the the only thing that we could do is really shut the lot down altogether. Um, but you know, I don't know how much, how much that's gonna save us, you know, especially in the winter time. You know, are we not gonna mow out there during the summertime? Just let it go to weed?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, I mean Yeah. You know what will happen to the the warming house if you don't have the windows all boarded up and, you know, it's just a matter of time if that's the case, worst-case scenarios.
Yeah, and we then we're gonna have to put things into uh, you know, standby mode, cover up the windows and not offer it. I mean, a- again, I think a lot of it's gonna be based on what happens to Metro, what they decide.
Right, right.
It's a great idea to talk to the Metro rep.
Just as a quick note too, from the police end of that, you know, we did make some changes out there, which some of it came a little later, so we're not seeing the full effect of it right now. But if you do take a look at like our police salaries, I guess that's something Doug and I should have looked at a little closer. I think we can definitely reduce that because we've cut back on the amount of time we have to spend out there because we don't have three hundred cars a day. Um, so we can make some small adjustments there and also in some of our other um billables that we bill towards the commuter fare service, the line, the sixty-C uh five thirty-nine line. Those are the monthly costs for the kiosks and so forth, which we have now cut in half. So we'll see a little bit more savings going into next year with that. Um, you know, we're trying to look for what we can do to reduce those and uh, you know, just wait and see what happens with the hopefully parking revenues coming back, but um, you know, we have made some cuts. We can probably make a couple of more adjustments on here. I can get with um, Doug on if we wanted to look at, you know, they're not gonna be huge, but there are gonna be some small adjustments uh, for some projected savings there.
Do we have any idea when Shodine is planning on building something around the metro station yet? Is that just on hold or?
It's on hold for right now. Uh, it looks like Mr. Skidmore is online. I don't know if he wants to add anything, but uh I would say even from today, you're still gonna be several years out.
Uh, I believe uh John is correct. Uh, we're still evaluating our different positions.
Part of that has to do with Metro as well. Uh, Shodine has proposed a a land swap and uh we probably have met with them three or four times and cannot get a definitive answer out of Metro, whether or not they will commit to doing the land swap to make the Shodine TOD uh a better product.
Okay.
Time will tell.
Okay, so s- study these changes and in two weeks, we'll uh we'll see it in ordinance form. And in the meantime, John and I uh will uh do a little more analysis on Fund Fifty-Six. And then it sounds like we can, there's a few small changes we can make on the expense side of the Metro Fund and and Chief, you and I can get together to to talk about those. Uh, so th- those are the proposed changes in the current year's budget. Uh, please, as you study these, if you have questions or suggestions or or insights, I think you all know my email address, so I'm I'm working from home, but I get my village email on my village computer that's set up in my bedroom here. So uh, I spend most of my day in the bedroom now.
Well, I'm not gonna beat a dead train, but uh looking at the Metro budget, we have a hundred-and-forty, even if you reduce, let's say, ten thousand or fifteen thousand, the revenue coming in, more than likely, we're not gonna have an increase in people taking the train until everybody's vaccinated.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have the side effect of businesses reevaluating the models and how they they do their operation, if they can do it from uh, virtual world versus in person. I I really think if, and especially if we're gonna be going out asking for more money uh, either a bond or to do things that for, you know, referendum or however you want to handle that, and we're keep showing a a hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar sinkhole, it doesn't make sense. We're we're not showing the the residents of Elburn. We're being responsible with the monies we have. It just we have to, we have to make some hard decisions and this this line item right now is showing up pretty, pretty big.
So you're right, we've got some tough, tough decisions to make. So, we've got a some little changes we need to make between now and two weeks from now, and then we'll we'll go through it again two weeks from now. But like I, like I mentioned, uh if you, if you have questions or or ideas, let us know. Otherwise, we'll bring it up for approval two weeks from now. Uh, that's that's the plan anyway. But if there are a lot more questions come up or or ideas or issues, uh, it it doesn't necessarily have to be approved in the meeting, at the meeting in two weeks, which by the way, it's gonna be on a Tuesday instead of a Monday. So all right, those are the budget changes for the current year's budget, and that concludes my presentation unless there are any more questions.
Any questions for Doug?
All right, thank you.
All right, any other business to come before the committee of the whole? Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Move by trustee Philek, second. Second by trustee Guberek, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all for a good night's work, even with the Zoom breakout room worked out real well, John. I think that's uh that went well. We'll stay uh on Zoom for the moment. Uh, for the next meeting, as Doug mentioned, it's on a Tuesday because of the Martin Luther King holiday. See you all then. Happy New Year, everyone.